Okay. Good morning. Welcome to the regular session of Elgin County Council's December sixth, two thousand and twenty-three, nine A M., and I will call this meeting to order. First order of business is the adoption of the minutes.
Be it resolved that the minutes of the meetings, the minutes of the regular council meeting and the special council meeting held on November twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty-three be adopted?
Do we have a mover and seconder? Counselor Hance and Counselor Cookett will second. All in favor? That is carried. Remind members of any disclosures of pecuniary interest in the general nature thereof. Seeing none? We do not have any petitions or presentations or delegations, which brings us to committee of the whole.
Be it resolved that we do now move into committee of the whole?
Need a mover and seconder, please. Counselor Noble and Counselor Latham. All in favor? And that's carried. Section six, reports of council, outside boards and staff, six one, the Wardens' activity report for November. Uh, council, the, uh, report is attached. Uh, it's fairly self-explanatory. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to entertain them. Otherwise, uh, I'd entertain a motion to receive and file. Counselor Latham? Deputy Warden Jones. Saved you some bervage there. All in favor? That is carried. Thank you. Six two, Director of Homes and Senior Services, Homes Policies and Procedures. Good morning, Michelle.
Good morning, Mr. Warden. Thank you very much. Uh, through you to members of council before you as the report, uh, sorry, the purpose of this report is to seek council approval for delegation of approval of the homes policies and procedures for our three county of Elgin homes. Uh, the homes require policies and procedures that align with legislative requirements to meet Ministry of Long-Term Care requirements as well as the day-to-day operational needs and to provide direction for all home staff in the provision of care and services. Our policies and procedures are reviewed annually and with changes to legislation to ensure alignment with current legislation and best practices. Uh, to support timely implementation of resident care and services, it is recommended that the Director of Homes and Senior Services be provided the authority to approve, ensuring that the homes policies and procedures are reviewed and approved by the applicable persons. Uh, there are, there may occasionally still be policies that will come to council for review and approval prior to implementation. So an example of of that might be the mandatory vaccination policies that we've had in the past. Uh, pending council directions, staff will communicate updates to the approval process for homes policies and procedures to the appropriate persons to support timely review, revision, implementation, and positive outcomes. There's two recommendations before council, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you for that report, Michelle. Does anyone have any questions, concerns, comments? Counselor Jigir.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Uh, just a couple of questions. Um, can you comment on how the delegation, how we reconcile the delegate delegation to you, um, with the liabilities or responsibilities that, uh, council has that's specific to long, long-term care? And, um, the second part is I, first off, I want to say I fully support this because I, I personally have experienced the negative impact of a delay um, uh, with policy implementation, but I'm wondering if, uh, similar to what we do with procurement, if, uh, council could receive either quarterly or semi-annual, uh, update on like an inventory of all of the, the policies that were uh, change, the nature of the change, and how it was communicated, or something like that.
Uh, thank you for those great questions. Um, I have Nick Loeb with me as well, so I'm not sure if you want to comment or you want me to go ahead. Okay.
Uh, good morning, Warden. Through you to council. Uh, so on the answer for responsibility and liability, uh, council's responsible under the Fixing Long-Term Care Home Act to ensure the homes are operated in compliance with the act. And that exists whether you delegate the authority or not. So the, the liability and responsibility, uh, level doesn't change with a delegation like this. Um, and it's, it's industry standard and appropriate to make a delegation like this to the Director of Homes and Senior Services, um, because she has subject matter expertise and she, uh, has prepared the recommendation uh, in a way that requires her to consult with the relevant people, whether it's medical directors or I P A C teams, et cetera. Uh, and so I don't think it changes any sort of risk profile for council and, and it's fully in compliance with the legislation.
I believe there's a second part there, uh, Michelle.
Thank you. So, um, I will be bringing to council in two thousand and twenty-four a report on committee of management process. Um, so through that process, quarterly reporting will be recommended, and that would be an opportunity where I could provide the update of policy and procedure changes outlining the areas that you, uh, requested.
Okay. Thank you very much for that, uh, Michelle, and thank you, uh, Counselor Jigir. That was on my mind as well. Uh, as long as council's kept informed of, uh, policy changes, I don't see a concern. And as already expressed by, uh, Director of Legal, that, uh, we have that responsibility under the, under the act anyway, and it's appropriate to have it delegated to you. Okay. Any other comments, concerns? Questions? Okay, Jenna, please.
Be it resolved that the report titled Homes Policies and Procedures dated December sixth, two thousand and twenty-three from the Director of Homes and Senior Services be received and filed, and that council authorize the Director of Homes and Senior Services to approve legislatively required mandatory homes policies and procedures, provided that the appropriate persons have reviewed and provided approval.
Do we have a mover and seconder for that? Counselor Sloan and Counselor Jigir. All in favor? That's carried. Six three, Manager of Emergency Management and Elgin Middlesex Regional Fire School, request for additional resources. Good morning, Andrea.
Good morning. Through the warden to the, uh, the committee. Um, I I want to, uh, elaborate a bit more on the report that I had put in, um, for this morning's council meeting. Um, I understand that, uh, perhaps maybe a bit of a, a timeline, um, painted might be a bit easier to, to follow. Um, and so over the course of the last three years, um, in two thousand and nineteen, uh, the fall of two thousand and nineteen, the county hired the first C E M C and fire training officer. And at that time, the focus, um, as I understand it, is, was mostly emergency management. It wasn't necessarily business continuity, and it also wasn't even fire training at the time. At that time, the school didn't exist. Um, that person left just about a year later in the fall of two thousand and twenty. Now, in February of two thousand and twenty-one, my predecessor, uh, got the position, and at that time, he was hired as a C E M C and the fire training officer. And in October of two thousand and twenty-one, was promoted to manager in light of the school being established under the O F C. Now, the focus at that time was, in his position, was getting the fire school up and running. Um, it was a need that was identified throughout the county and even our neighboring counties, and, and that was his focus. And again, it wasn't other, other aspects of the position, business continuity, or E M S oversight, or, or anything of the sort. His focus hundred percent was on getting that fire school up and running. Now, because of this, significant time was spent. In fact, as I understand it, again, hundreds of hours of blue time were, were banked. Um, so much so that after only running the school for a year, um, he ended up taking the summer off and, um, afterwards, there was also two staff members in two thousand and twenty-two that were added as a result of the increased workload. Now, the previous manager did end up leaving in September of two thousand and twenty-two. Um, however, like I said, prior to that, the administrative assistant, um, was implemented, that position was implemented in early January of two thousand and twenty-two, and I imagine quite strategically, given that the recruit program, uh, which begins in January is by far our most demanding time of year. Um, that role includes administration duties for not only the school, but was proposed to also include the emergency management side of that department. However, since starting, a hundred percent of the admin time has been spent on the fire school, given the demands administratively. In April, two thousand and twenty-five, or sorry, April twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-two, the emergency management coordinator had began as well. Um, that role included alternate C E M C duties for the county and the lower tiers and oversight of the emergency management program. So the plans, the risk assessments, critical infrastructure, exercises, compliance, et cetera, et cetera. Now, in two thousand and twenty-three, the administrative assistant departed in early February. That left a significant gap. Um, and the emergency coordinator, emergency management coordinator, left in September of this year as well. Um, when I began in January, um, after only a few weeks, I was running the fire school um, entirely on my own, which did demand probably over ninety to a hundred hours of my time. Now, in May, we were able to replace that, the admin position, which did help that burden. Um, however, since then, I've been consistently putting in anywhere from fifty-five to seventy-five hours a week. The admin position as well has also been consistently putting in additional time over and above the normal full-time hours expected. With the, um, the bank time is not, uh, as much of an issue this, this year, uh, given the new bank time policy. So although the hours were put in, they were, um, they're not being added up, so that's not a, that's not a concern. With, uh, the report that was put forward and the, the budget report that was put forward, um, to the Budget Committee, um, we had suggested adjusting staffing models after long discussions with the C A O. Um, in order to make the department more sustainable, we need to rework the staffing and, as a result, the revenue models. And so that is what that, that budget proposed. And so increasing, we are asking for a fire training, um, coordinator. Um, however, we are looking to increase our fees to offset that cost so that we are self-sustainable. Um, I have had discussions with the fire chiefs across the county, and they are all very familiar with the need of additional staff in the department. And despite the increased cost to training, they're all very supportive of, of moving forward with the increased fees to, to, um, accommodate the additional staff member. Um, even with the increased fees, it is the most economical and, and, um, efficient model for them to, to get their firefighters trained and to meet their provincial legislation. Um, as you probably know, all firefighters need to be N F P A certified by July first, two thousand and twenty-six, um, in all the disciplines that they are, are participating in. So with the new model, um, what the roles and responsibilities would look like, uh, is that the manager, I would still contribute to fire school business on some level. It would just be a, a much more even workload between myself, the administrative assistant, and the new fire training coordinator. Um, it will allow time to focus on business continuity planning for the county and the lower-tier municipalities. Um, improved shared services and opportunities for additional support for our lower-tier municipalities, uh, such as county C E M C meetings, uh, working groups like the one that we are putting together for the solar eclipse. Um, increased oversight of the E M S contract as per discussions with the C A O, uh, strategic planning, and along with C E M C duties as incidents come up. The admin will be still maintaining administrative duties for the school, but it will allow them to balance their time better and should be able to also allow support to the emergency management and E M S side of that department. The fire, or sorry, emergency management coordinator will continue with the role that, that they were doing previously. So the alternate C E M C duties, um, for the county and the lower tiers and oversight of the program. So again, the plans, the risk assessment, critical infrastructure, et cetera. The fire training coordinator will help to coordinate with A S N E and O F C, so, um, Ontario Fire College. They will help manage equipment, transport, maintenance, repair, inventory and asset management, records management. They will assist with course reconciliation and invoicing. Um, they will assist the manager with program alteration and course scheduling, instructor scheduling, et cetera. The need is there. Absolutely, the need is there, and the reason that we have requested to the Budget Committee that we bring this forward to council early is because January, as I mentioned, is our, by far our most demanding time of year, and that is ultimately when the need is the most.
All right. Thank you, Andrea. Does anyone have any questions? Counselor Sloan.
Through you, Warden. Thanks, Andrea. How, the fire school that you're referring to, how, how often is that open? What months does it open?
Uh, through the warden to Counselor Sloan, it, it's open twelve months a year. We have courses running all the time.
Perfect. I didn't know that. Thank you. Yeah. So in two thousand and twenty-two, um, you were saying that people left, so you had, how many people were there in two thousand and twenty-two, two or three?
Uh, including myself, there would have been three in the department. So of myself, the administrative assistant, and the emergency management coordinator.
Okay, but during that time, you were saying they lost some of these people. It was, there were some people left?
Correct.
So when is the last time that we had full, three full, three full positions running the department?
It would have been early September of this year. So, uh, in February of this year, we had the administrative assistant, um, resign. That position was filled in May, and from May to September, we were at full complement, uh, with three staff members. Uh, and the hours were still above and beyond what, what would normally be expected, uh, for the fire school side of things. And then in September is when the emergency management coordinator left.
Okay, so, but for two thousand and twenty-four, you're wanting, you're wanting four people, not three, correct?
That is correct. Um, even with full complement, we still saw hours, um, like I said, for the manager position, it was fifty-five to seventy-five an hour per week, and the admin is consistently working longer than the, the normal thirty-five hours a week, even at full complement now.
Okay, when's the last time we had full complement, Andrea?
Um, it's early September of this year, like I said.
Early September. And just last thing, what are the, 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 the job that you're hiring when it says fire coordinator? What's the background or education that people have, someone has to have to take this, uh, fourth position?
Ideally, be very familiar with, um, N F P A courses and fire training, um, training in general would be, would be great. Um, it isn't necessarily expectation that they will be at every course doing the training. Um, but be able to help on the inside and, and understand what is necessary and be able to fill in, should we have someone call in sick or that type of thing.
So just may I, Warden, follow up. So is, is this something an internal candidate could apply for if they hadn't worked for a fire department before but worked for Elgin County?
I suppose if the qualifications were there, absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you, Warden. Okay, thank you for that. Any additional questions? Yes, Counselor Hance.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Warden. And Andrea, you made a comment of fifty-five to seventy hours a week, which is too many, and you also made a statement, hours were not put in. Could you explain that?
Um, if I, sorry, if I understand the question correctly, um, in terms of banked time?
Yes.
So in previous years, um, previous staff banked hundreds of hours of overtime, and as a result, they ended up taking, um, multiple months off in the summer. Um, we have implemented, Elgin County, sorry, has implemented, um, a bank time policy. Um, and in light of that, it, it sort of limits that from happening, being able to bank hundreds of hours. Um, and so while we, we weren't able to bank that, given the policy, so just trying to align with, with corporate policy, we did not bank that time, but the time was still put in. So it wouldn't necessarily be reflected on, um, finances, time cards, I guess, is what I'm saying.
Okay, thank you. And just one more comment, Mr. Warden. Um, banking of hours, um, there, there needs to be a limit on that as well, and then you have people taking too much time off, and then the workload falls onto those remaining. So this is a huge issue, in my opinion.
Thank you, Andrea. Okay, thank you for those comments. Additional questions? Counselor Woodner.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Warden. Through to Andrea. Seems like you've had a lot of resignation sentences in the system. Would more help alleviate that problem?
Uh, through the warden to Counselor Woodner, yes, I, I believe it would. Um, it's, it isn't sustainable, and unfortunately, while I believe it was implemented with all good intentions, um, I think the demands of the fire school are just more than the staff that we have available. Um, to compare to other regional training centers, um, they have multiple staff members being able to coordinate these courses, and so it isn't, um, I would say we are still probably less than what most of the other R T Cs are. Um, but to answer your question simply, yes, I do believe that it will be of help to be able to offer a more balanced workplace and more balanced hours.
Deputy Warden Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Uh, I, I guess it comes down to um, sorry. Comes down to, we, we've had a, a great success in the fire school, and that's put a lot, a lot more strain on our staff in order to carry it out. I know from my own experience itself, though, we've saved, saved, uh, an amount, some amount of money, uh, having a local school instead of having people tra- uh, travel and stay over on a weekend. Um, I think we fully have to support this, uh, move. Uh, it's going to be supported by the fees that are being increased and, and, uh, I, I think we need to move forward on this.
Okay, thank you for those comments. Uh, Counselor Sloan.
Just to follow up, thank you, Andrea, and maybe this is to Dawn as well. So as someone that's, you know, it's been a year now that we've been in, um, and it's nice to, to meet Andrea and to hear about this, and Counselor, um, um, or Deputy Warden know, Jones knows more about this and, and the value of the program. Is it fair to say that, or to ask that a year from now, once this has been implemented, to get a review of the year past? Is, is it my understanding that Andrea is with us today just because there's a, a position request? But as a counselor, would it be fair to ask that a year from now, we kind of get a return to, here's what happened, here's the successes? And, um, so I just wanted to, to ask if that was something that's done.
Thank you. Uh, I, I'd go so far as to say that's exactly what's being done now. Um, Andrea's outlined the, the timeline that we've had for the review of the program, and the changes that have been made with respect to staffing have been incremental, and so every year, there's been an assessment done. So, you know, I won't deal with the first candidate because it sounds like they were only doing an emergency management rather than fire training, but, uh, Andrea's predecessor, uh, very experienced in the area. In fact, the person is now the Assistant Deputy Fire Marshal for the Province of Ontario, responsible for training. So, you know, has some street credibility in that regard. He also couldn't fulfill all of the requirements unilaterally. He, he literally had to have like two months off just because of the extra time, and Andrea, extraordinarily hardworking. I did not hear a lot of complaints when I walked in, but when I was talking to her about the review, as you just described, um, no one sheds a tear if someone in the private, uh, the public sector works forty or forty-five hours a week. It's like boo hoo, everybody else does as well. However, ninety hours to a hundred hours when there's short staffing, or six, or fifty-five to sixty-five, seventy-five hours a week, that's not sustainable. And, and I think what happens, and there are turnovers, people just kind of go, I just can't take this anymore. I think Andrea's, uh, recommendation, she has worked with Jennifer Ford and myself, uh, is incremental, and I think most importantly for the taxpayers that are listening, this is being done by increasing the fees paid for the fire services training. There is no increased levy being requested for the taxpayers. It's, it's revenue neutral in that respect, and we believe it's more sustainable. So, quick answer is that's what they've done, and I think it's entirely reasonable for council to get an annual report, and that's certainly something I'll, I can take forward to Blaine as part of his onboarding when he comes in, uh, his new role in January to suspect, or sorry, to, uh, make sure that review is conducted. So I guess it's a really good idea.
Thank you. Thank you, Warden.
Any additional questions? Andrea, one question related, but not quite on this topic. Do the, uh, does the current fee structure still favor, or if implemented, uh, through the budget process, would the fee structure still favor Elgin fire services over, say, Middlesex Fire Services? There was a distinction between the two units. Right. Thank you very much for that. Okay. Jenna, please.
Be it resolved that Elgin County Council approved the addition of a fire training coordinator position in the emergency management department?
Do we have anyone willing to move? Deputy Warden Jones, and I seen Counselor Noble will second. All in favor? And that is carried. Thank you. Moving on to six four, Corporate Communications and Engagement Coordinator and Accessibility Coordinator, refreshing the Elgin County brand, addressing accessibility requirements. Good morning, Jessica.
Good morning, Mr. Warden, and through you to County Council. This morning, I am here to discuss our corporate brand and refreshing that brand, and that will address some accessibility concerns. So, as many of you are aware, this logo was created in two thousand and seven, and it was endorsed by County Council then. However, due to marketing changes as well as accessibility changes in visual identity, the logo is in need of a, a slight refresh in order to address these concerns. So in two thousand and five, A O D A was implemented, and in two thousand and eleven, the Integrated Accessibility Standards Regulation was implemented for public sector organizations. And this regulation requires public sector organizations to comply with W three C, which is Web Content Accessibility Guidelines, um, Level A and trip, or Double A by January first, two thousand and one, under Information and Communication Standard. So to comply with these regulations, we have made some, some slight modifications to the Elgin County brand utilizing an external um, graphic designer, and it was a fairly inexpensive cost to the corporation. It was three hundred and sixteen dollars and forty cents to, to make these changes. So I'm just gonna ask you to flip to the next slide. So as you can see here, the current logo is on the left, and we do have two different variations of the logo. So we have the stacked and the horizontal version. And as you can see, um, we were able to refresh the color palette. So the color palette is now accessible. Um, Sarah, who was our former accessibility coordinator, took all these colors and put them through an accessibility checker just to ensure that these colors are, in fact, um, accessible when it comes to utilizing them for headings and for, um, public documents. We also changed the font to be a font that's accessible, so not sans serif anymore. It is Arial. So that will, um, would be the font going forward, utilizing that Arial font to ensure accessibility. Next slide. So this next version is the, um, Elgin County Progressive by Nature with our tagline. So we were able to update this logo as well by putting progressive by nature in the black, black color, as well as using the same font and the same, same colors. And then I'd also just wanted to present, um, a departmental, um, logo, just for you to see how this would be implemented for a department. So departments that are, um, public-facing on our website, Elgin County Tourism, Elgin County Archives, Elgin County Library, et cetera, they will all have their own logos because they do have their own section with on, within our website. So as you can see, similar to progress, to progressive by nature, we were able to utilize the same, the same concept of changing the department to black to ensure that it's accessible. So this is a ve- a very timely project. As many of you are aware, we are redoing our corporate website right now, and our retained company Sandbox is looking for our branding. So they, in order to stay on timeline with their timeline as well as our timeline with the grant funding, this is something that's very timely that we need to address this and ensure that our website is completely accessible to the public and utilizing these colors going forward would be, would be a way to do that. Um, so when it comes to other corporate assets, this logo would be implemented for web-based or digital-based files or corporate assets first, as this would not be, um, a large chunk of the budget that would be needed. They could all be done in-house and through our, um, new website, so it would be very easy to, to make these changes in-house for web-based assets and digital assets. But when it comes to physical assets, these, um, these items could be phased in with life cycle. So for example, the signage on, um, county roads, those will be coming up with a, with life cycle, so that would be a perfect time to implement this new logo um, on corporate physical assets, as well as our emergency response vehicles and our ambulances. Those are both, um, up for renewal with their decals on new vehicles. So this would again be a new opportunity to So this would again be a new opportunity to add this logo to those to those assets. So to keep the cost down, it would mainly be for digital assets because this is regulated and needs to be done because of legislation. So as you can see, the logo it addresses accessibility requirements while it also maintains the integrity and intentions set out by the original logo. So with that, there are two recommendations before you, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Jessica. I'll open it to the floor. Any questions? Deputy Warden Jones?
Just more of a comment. I understand why we're doing this, obviously. I don't mind the colors at all. The lettering seems to be a little bit of a letdown for me, but I understand why we're doing it. It's is what it is, I guess, unless there's other options for lettering, but I don't that there's too many options for that.
Yes, Jessica, please.
Through you, Mr. Warden, to Deputy Warden Jones. For accessibility purposes, there are only a certain number of fonts that we could utilize to ensure that the font is accessible for all. We did, we did look at a few different options. And basically what our thought process was, was to get rid of that sans serif. So all those extra tails that are on all of the letters, that is what makes it makes it a little more inaccessible.
Don, did you have something to contribute to that?
I think Jessica's answered the question. I just, I did want to point out, sometimes the media will report when there's been projects or initiatives by government that are extraordinarily costly. I just want to just do a shout out to the team, three hundred and sixteen dollars, external staffing. And you know, Jessica was saying like, did it take me more time to learn the software that I need to have? Let's just go out and do sixteen. I think it's a great achievement and Sarah and Jessica and the extended team, I think, just did a really good job. One other thing I did want to point out, I did get a question from from Counselor Jiguer about the rollout process. And just to point out, Jessica's talked about the rollout going on our website and our electronic formats. That's what's required right now because of the legislation on accessibility. We have a number of other things that'll have to be changed, our letterhead, our business cards, all those sorts of things, signs on the roadway. All of those will be rolled out as part of a life cycle budget when it's required to be rolled out. We're not aware that there's currently any requirements by the province on the accessibility front to, you know, warrant having additional expenditures at this time. But, you know, Peter, for example, has talked about our roadway signs. Those will be, those are already due for a change. So when they're due for a change and when it's required, we'll roll that out as part of a regular budget. There's no additional cost expected. So again, I think that's a prudent use of the taxpayers' money. Thank you.
Counselor Cookett.
Thank you very much, Mr. Warden. Great report, Jessica. And as a CEO, as you said, it's kind of very inexpensive. I'm just curious about, is there, you mentioned something about an accessibility tester. Is there some great list that the province has in terms of the colors that are supposed to be used and the fonts that are supposed to be used and all that kind of stuff?
So not that I'm aware of. We didn't want to stray away too far from the current colors. Obviously, the the colors that are within our logo are meant to represent our closeness to the lake as well as our rolling hills of our farmland, our sky and our sunny, beautiful county that we're all lucky to live in. So we didn't want to shy too far away from from those colors. So what we were able to do was we basically just kept taking the colors and darkening them until they hit that double A within the AODA requirement. So that's how we came up with these colors was we just had to basically keep darkening them until they were until they were accessible. So we were able to use a checker that that will let you know once it meets the double A based on a twelve-point font, which is what we want to guarantee that these colors are able to do. I hope that answers your question.
Yes, thank you. Just the double A. So there is a kind of list or there is a kind of requirement somewhere by the provinces we have to check with. Right? I'm just wondering who does that. All right. Thanks very much. That was a great report.
We can send that out, the the reference for what the checker is, we can send that to members of County Council. And so that the your respective local municipalities would also have that accessible. But yes, there is a definitely checklist for us.
Anyone else? Counselor Widner.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Warden. It would be nice to see a list of who's the prompt of this. Because I can't understand how, what's the accessibility problem with color and the wording? Is it just people cannot see that properly? Or can you explain that to me? Thank you.
So basically, in order for, you know, a screen reader and someone who is visually impaired to be able to see these colors on a white background, double A requires requires these colors to be of a certain a certain hue for them to be able to be legible. So we put them through a checker online that is able to let us know when it meets triple A or double A, which we are required for double A. So basically, we just want to make sure that the general public is able to to access our fonts and all of our corporate documents as well as people who might have a visual impairment. So that's that's what the province puts in place are these these different levels of of accessibility.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? So Jessica, which logo are you looking at recommending? The side-by-side or the stacked?
Through you, Mr. Warden. So we we like to have options, especially when it comes to graphic design and the needs of all of our different departments. So we would keep all of the logo options that staff can can utilize, whichever one makes sense for the for the asset. Sometimes you need a long skinny logo in order to fit at the bottom of a of a page. But sometimes there's the need for the stacked logo. So we just wanted to ensure that there are still options and some creativity for different departments.
Okay, thank you for that. Anything further? Okay, thank you for that report. Jenna, please.
Be it resolved that the report titled Refreshing the Elgin County Brand Addressing Accessibility Requirements stated December sixth, twenty twenty-three from the Corporate Communications and Engagement Coordinator and Accessibility Coordinator be received and filed and that the refreshed County of Elgin logo be approved as presented.
Do we have a mover and seconder for that? I see Counselor Henson, Counselor Latham will second. All in favor? And that is carried. Thank you. Section six five, Director of Engineering Services, Geotechnical Services, Slope Rehabilitation Works, Fingle Line and Glenary Line. Good morning, Peter.
Good morning, Mr. Warden. Through you to the rest of County Council. As part of as part of pre-engineering work for planned two thousand twenty-four capital projects, On Globe Corporation was retained through our competitive RFP process to review some geotechnical investigative work on projects that are upcoming, specifically on the Fingle Hill that is proposed to be reconstructed next year and the reconstruction of Glenary Line, which is proposed to be completed in two thousand twenty-five. Through that investigation, it was concluded that a total of ten unstable road slope locations exist on these sections of roadway. This engineering and design work is important to remain, to maintain schedules of the other construction work that that is proposed. On Globe Corp. has submitted a proposal, and that proposal is attached to this report, to complete geotechnical fieldwork to drill boreholes at each one of these unstable slope locations. And those slopes are steep. Some of them range between six meters and twenty-eight meters in depth. Their proposal will also complete laboratory testing and prepare remediation specifications and design drawings. And that's the most important part here. We want the actual design drawings on how each one of these road slopes need to be remediated so that we can issue construction tenders to complete those works. The proposed twenty twenty-four budget has allocated funds toward the reconstruction of these two projects. And there are sufficient budget funds to fund this work that is proposed by On Globe. The county's procurement policy allows for single-source purchases. And specifically, it states the procurement may be conducted using a single-source process if there is a need for compatibility with goods or services previously acquired or acquired goods and or services will be in addition to similar goods or services supplied under an existing contract. The county has previously awarded geotechnical investigative services to On Globe through a competitive request for proposal process. And this new proposal is a natural continuation of this completed, previously completed work. And that's why staff is recommending to accept their proposal as a single-source purchase at this time. As mentioned, the proposed twenty twenty-four capital budget does include sufficient funds, a total of four point six million dollars over both of these projects. And that's where the two hundred and nine thousand five hundred dollars proposed by On Globe will be funded from. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you for the report, Peter. Does anyone have any questions? Or comments?
Barely straightforward. It's necessary work in order to rebuild.
Jenna, please.
Be it resolved that On Globe Corporation be retained to provide geotechnical investigative slope stability analysis and remediation design services for the rehabilitation of unstable road slopes on Fingle Line and Glenary Line in accordance with section four point seven C three of the county's procurement policy.
Do we, Counselor Noble, you'll move? Anyone second? Deputy Warden Jones? All in favor? That's carried. Thank you. Six six, Director of Engineering Services, the Talbotville Bypass and Highway Three twinning, Public Information Center Two. An update. Peter, please.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Through you to the rest of County Council. As council is aware, the MTO is planning improvements to Highway Three, the corridor that extends from Highway number four all the way easterly to Centennial Avenue. There was a first PIC that was Public Information Center that was held in August. And as a result of that, County Council submitted a list of comments regarding the project and specific design features. Recently, staff has received a response from the MTO's consultant, who is Stan Tech. And they've confirmed the receipt and consideration of those comments. Their specific response is attached to this report. Generally, county's comments are either being considered or have already been implemented into the preliminary design. Specifically, the interchange design models that council supported have been implemented into the preliminary design. And also of note, the movement of agricultural equipment is being taken into consideration. However, agricultural equipment will remain prohibited from using Highway number three as it currently exists today. The speed limit will be increased from eighty kilometers an hour to a hundred kilometers an hour on this section of Highway number three now that it's going to be transformed into a divided highway cross-section. The second PIC was held recently on November twenty-second. There was an agency-only session in the afternoon, which staff attended. And in the evening, there was a public session and the MTO had identified that a hundred and twenty-two attendees from the public attended the PIC. So it was very well attended. Some of the highlights of that PIC are now provided in the report, and I'll go through some of them. There are going to be two different rural cross-sections. Generally, on the west side of Wellington Road, there's going to be a twenty-two point five wide meter wide median. And that medium will be reduced in width as we proceed easterly into the city of St. Thomas. And that was predominantly chosen to reduce property impacts within the city. On the top of page forty-four of the agenda package, you'll note a digital rendering of the proposed roundabout that will be constructed at the intersection of the new Highway Three bypass and where it ties into Highway number four. Below that is a digital rendering of the proposed interchange at Ram McNeil Line, Wonderland Road and Talbot Line. You'll note that there is a cul-de-sac shown on the bottom right-hand corner where Ford Road is proposed to be terminated as well as a cul-de-sac where the existing sharp curve exists on Wonderland Road. On the following page is a rendition, digital rendering of the interchange proposed for Wellington Road and Talbot Line. Of note, at this location is a set of traffic signals to facilitate ramp movements as part of council's first list of comments provided to the MTO as a result of PIC number one. One of those comments were also to include the construction, the implementation of traffic signals at the intersection of Wellington Road and McBane Line, which isn't shown quite in this rendering. It's a little bit south to there. Staff's concern or comment is that the MTO should implement these signals at their cost and they should coordinate the timing of all of these three sets of signals because of their close proximity. Once that those signals on McBane Line intersection at Wellington Road were constructed, then the county would assume them as owners because that section of roadway is under the county's jurisdiction. Finally, there's a rendering at the bottom of page forty-five of the twinning of the Talbot Creek Crossing of on the twinning of Highway number three, and that's within the city of St. Thomas. During the PIC, the province provided a preliminary construction staging sequence. And this is developed over a five-year timeframe. They're anticipating this could begin as soon as twenty twenty-five, and that depends on subject to funding and environmental approvals. So during the first year, the province intends to widen Highway number four. They plan to construct the roundabout where the new bypass will tie into Highway number four. And they will begin work on the Highway Three bypass and head easterly toward toward where it ties in right now at Wonderland Road. They'll also begin work on the CNR overhead structure that is proposed. During that second year, they'll continue work on the Highway Three bypass. They'll complete the CNR overhead structure. And this is when they'll begin the ramp construction at the interchange of Ram McNeil Line and Wonderland Road. The following year and year three is when they'll physically construct that interchange at Ram McNeil Line, Wonderland Road, and they'll continue with Highway twinning, Highway number three twinning and work on the first AV interchange within the city. And then finally, in years four and five, they'll continue with the Highway Three twinning cross-section and construct the Wellington Road interchange. It's anticipated that these construction activities will require a number of construction contracts. And they'll have fluctuating impacts to the county road system. Long-duration detours on county roads is not anticipated at this time. Being told by the province that their construction sequencing will do their best in order to limit those disruptions. But there absolutely will be times where county roads will be used as construction detours. The MTO have requested, as they had at the conclusion of PIC number one, to receive comments emanating from the new information provided in PIC number two. So this report also recommends a list for council's consideration to be submitted to the MTO for their inclusion in their design report. The list in front of you has five bullet points. After discussions with the Director of Legal Services, we've enhanced that list to include one other bullet point, and I'll go through those right now. The first consideration is that construction detours utilizing county roads would be minimized in duration where possible. That county roads considered to be utilized as construction detours have a formal assessment completed to determine their current state of repair as a benchmark condition prior to use as detour routes. That if county roads are used as construction detour routes, that the MTO commit to restoring these roads to their pre-detour condition at the project completion. And then this is the, these following points want to protect the county's interest if there are further costs occur. If those use of the county roads create any damage or increase maintenance costs, the following comments would protect the county's interests. That if the county roads are used as construction detour routes, that the MTO be responsible for any maintenance activities required as a result of the road's increased use. This is the additional point here is that notwithstanding the specificity of comments two, three and four, the MTO compensate the county for any additional costs of work, including contracted services that is reasonably required arising out of the use of the county road as a detour road. So what I foresee here is if these detour routes are being used and the traffic volume increases, the count that the MTO or the construction contractor may not give us the standard of of response that we presume or that we give us the standard of response that we presume or that we require on our roads. And we may be requesting the lower, the local municipal partners to plead any maintenance activities on those roadways at a cost. And we'd expect that the county be reimburse those costs from the province. And finally, a consideration is that cul-de-sacs be designed so that municipal services such as plow trucks or garbage trucks can make that movement, make that turnaround in one movement. Because these cul-de-sacs are being created on public roadways, they'll require continued maintenance by the local municipality, and we want to ensure that that maintenance is being completed as easily as it can be. There'll be another opportunity for staff and for County Council to comment in 2024 when the province develops their Transportation Environmental Study Report. And there is ongoing communication with the province. The province just set up a regular occurring monthly meeting for staff, and we expect that to extend through the entire five-year duration of the project. So we'll be in constant contact with the MTO during the design process. That concludes the report, and I'd be pleased to answer any questions.
Yes, Peter, unless I misunderstood, the, the comments for consideration for submission that you've read out is different from the one that I've seen on this report. You're missing the traffic signalization at Clinton. And I wonder if you could provide some comments on that.
Thank you. Absolutely. Thank you for identifying that, Mr. Warden. As I mentioned, staff had some discussions with, with legal services, and I was working off a different list. But absolutely, it's, it's a paramount consideration as part of the design process. There is a realignment of two local roads within the township of Southhold, Clinton Line, Longhurst Line. And what they're doing is reconfiguring that intersection to become less congested. And right now, it's, it's a bit odd. There's, there's, there's too many approaches within a single location. So they're trying to consolidate those with, with making it a four, a standard four approach intersection. At this time, the MTO is not considering any signalization or any type of control at that intersection because Clinton Line is a county road, and because we understand it's going to be a four-lane cross-section across Sunset Road, we understand there's a need for agricultural equipment to make the east-to-west movement across Highway Number Four. And therefore, we also are recommending to Council that we make the comment that the MTO will implement signalization at that intersection.
So just to be clear, the, the intention of the province is that Number Four Sunset is going to remain at an 80-kilometer roadway? Or is it going to be upscaled to 100?
I don't have that answer immediately available. I understand that Highway Three is being increased and, and and Highway Four's cross-section, from what I understand, is not going to be divided. And that could be the deciding point for them. If they're not dividing the traffic, it likely will remain at 80 kilometers an hour. However, that cross-section is very long. For example, a number of years ago, the county implemented traffic signalization at the intersection of Highbury Avenue and Ferguson Line. The traffic volume warrants on the side street, which is Ferguson Line of that location, never met warrants. However, we understood that the delay to cross for larger equipment was significant, and it posed a safety issue. So Council supported traffic signalization at that location. And for those same reasons, we're recommending that the MTO include signalization at the intersection of Clinton Line and Sunset Road.
Okay, so as far as you're aware at this point, there is no recommendation, or I guess you could say assumption from the province that agricultural equipment will be prohibited along Number Four.
I'm not sure about Number Four. I'm looking at the east and west movement on the local roads that they utilize right now.
Still gonna have to cross Number Four if they want to go. So the point I'm getting at is if they're looking for continuity of flow in order to maintain that flow, they may not be too receptive to a signalization at those points. But it also poses a big problem for our agricultural operators in the area. Where are they going to go in order to get east and west? Sounds like the Glenworth Bridge all over again. Yes. Deputy Warden Jones?
Thank you, Warden. Yeah, I, I went to the evening meeting just for that purpose, to get the feedback from the local farmers, and it was ugly. They were very upset that this hadn't even been in consideration. It was very apparent the staff hadn't thought about it. And this also, because, so Mr. Born is outside the study area. City of Toronto wasn't notified. And City of Toronto is not very happy either because now they have trucks trying to make a left-hand turn onto a road that's going to be significantly more busy, and they have a difficulty already trying to get their large trucks out back onto the 401. So I think we need to stay on this and push hard because it took that very hard push to keep Glenworth Drive in place. We were successful there, but if we don't have signalization or another overpass, we have some farmers that are going to have, and Belmont Farm Supply, they travel that road a lot. Going east-west, it's going to make it very difficult.
Absolutely. Thank you. And yes, Counselor Widner.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I'm looking at page, there's 42, 43 with the Rahm McNeil Wonderland Road photograph, and it shows the farm in the northeast corner. How is this gentleman going to run this operation with 300 trucks going in and out every year? Because they own land all the way around it. How are you supposed to get across this mess? And do a normal farm organi- like it, it won't be sustainable. And I don't, I know he's been to these meetings, and they look at him like he's got two heads. They don't care. But what are you supposed to do? Like, that's the time to be fighting some access to your property. Any suggestions for this, or?
That was discussed. Sorry, through you, Mr. Warden, to Counselor Widner. That specifically was requested for MTO to consider, and they confirmed to staff that agricultural movement would be designed to be accommodated down that existing cul-de-sac, which is going to be created at that farm property. So essentially, that's the extension of Wonderland Road as it exists today. It'll be essentially a long private laneway with a proper cul-de-sac that would accommodate agricultural equipment and movement. And the MTO were made full aware that this is a robust operation, and there are significant agricultural movements during certain times of the year through there.
Follow-up, then. So any operations that you runs to the southwest of there, how are you supposed to get across all these lanes of traffic over to this farm operation? Because that's where it all ends up. I just don't understand it. He's invited them to hop in the combine and show them how it's supposed to be done. But it's a serious, you know, this is a lot of money at stake on his behalf, and it's a serious disruption. Thank you.
Counselor Sloan?
Thank you, through you, Warden, to Peter. It's almost unbelievable when you look at some of the pictures. And, you know, we talk about our agricultural folks. They're spending hundreds of millions of dollars. And the next three to five years is not just going to affect the farmers, but the commuters, the homeowners, the residents. And my, my recommendation at some point, as I've, as I've said in through Central Elgin is there needs to be a community liaison officer. There needs to be someone that can take the questions of the people that are calling. This is an unprecedented investment in Elgin County, and the calls that come in through our municipality and perhaps, you know, others, will, will do, will, will continue. So when we've had our meetings, and I, I suggest the Warden and Council as well, that that's something that's tangible that we could ask for so that there's someone that could answer some of the questions that are, are, are going to come up and increase, multiply in the next few years. Thank you, Warden.
Thank you for those comments. Anyone else? Counselor Noble?
Through you, Mr. Warden. Thank you, Peter, for the detailed report. I'm curious if MTO or the province have shared any intentions for Centennial and Number Three at the end there? Because there is nothing in the reports.
Through you, Mr. Warden, to Counselor Noble. The city of St. Thomas is undertaking environmental assessment for works to construct roundabouts on Centennial Avenue, right at the Highway Three Twinning that enter into the, the new development property, as well as north of there, where Rahm McNeil Line and Highbury Avenue meet. South of there, there's some improvements to the tracks, but there's been no other project scope movement. There have been concerns in regards to further east in how traffic might be handled. We've heard comments received from not only the public, but other staff members. For instance, Yarmouth Center Road, the intersection there at Number Three, with some potential issues. However, those right now do not fall within the project scope that the MTO is considering. So that's, that's, that's the only information I have at this time.
Counselor Hens?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Question to Peter. I know this pales in comparison to the Volkswagen land grab. Is there any information on the number of farm acres lost in this project? And second question, are there any houses being moved or displaced in this project? Thank you.
Thank you through you, Mr. Warden, to Counselor Hens. I'd be happy to ask that question. I'm not sure what has been lost as far as farmland. However, the MTO is utilizing previously designated lands that they've had on the books for about 50 years since the new, the existing expressway was first developed. There are some expanded areas which they are expropriating. I know of at least one house that is completely being removed at the intersection of Wellington Road and, and Number Three. We have not received any information of any homes that are being relocated. But I'd be happy to ask the question as to how much farmland is, is being lost as a result of this project. Right. Thank you.
Deputy Warden Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I believe it's three homes for sure that are being removed that I know of, at least in the, these plans that we have right now.
Okay. Any other comments, questions for Peter? Okay, I'm hearing, Peter, that there may be some additional questions or, or comments to be put to MTO on this. Okay, seeing nothing else? Jenna, please.
Be it resolved that the report titled Talbotville Bypass and Highway Three Twinning Public Information Center Two update dated December 6, 2023 from the Director of Engineering Services be received and filed, and that the list of comments identified in this report be sent to the Ministry of Transportation's study design team for consideration and inclusion in their Transportation Environmental Study Report, T S, T E S R.
Okay, do we have a mover and seconder for that report? Counselor Noble will move. Counselor Sloan will second. All in favor? Let's carry. Okay, we are within the past the first hour. Anyone want a quick break? Let's take a 10-minute break. Welcome back. We left off at section 6.7, Director of Legal Services, Parts Three and Nine, POA interim transfer agreement extension. Good morning, Nick.
Good morning, Warden, and through you to Council. So I'm here to present a report that is an extension of the Part Three download of more serious offenses to the Prosecution and Administration of our Provincial Offenses Court. The Part Nine is also in there, extremely rarely used. It's for orders under other statutes. The Part Three offenses are the more serious end of careless driving, and historically, they've been conducted by the local Crown Attorney or Assistant Crown's Attorney. And they began the process of downloading those, sorry, they, I mean, the Ministry of the Attorney General way back in 2017, technically, was the first act that did it, but it was actually implemented for the first time in 2021. The county was part of the initial group that joined what was then sort of described as a pilot project. And because of that, we had a two-year original agreement, and that is what this report comes forward about, is we need to extend that agreement. The province is now moving forward to roll it out province-wide. It's no longer particularly a pilot project. And the other thing, I, I gave a similar description to our Budget Committee last week, but I'd just like to let Council know there's varying degrees of logistical challenges and success across the province with this download. And Elgin County is fortunate that it's been relatively successful for us. So on the financial end of things, we haven't needed an uptick in prosecution resources. Our court is busy enough that we have a full-time prosecutor, and he was able to put these prosecutions into his existing capacity. So we're not so busy with additional charges that we needed more staff onboard. At the same time, we are not so small that we are paying sort of private lawyers an hourly rate, which would have increased our costs if we had to pay them more hours to conduct prosecutions like this. So we fit in, by coincidence as much as anything, the right size and busyness of court to be able to take these kinds of things on. And then ultimately, that results in us having more money because when the Crown Attorneys prosecute them or had in the past, the ministry then withholds from the fine collection, essentially a per diem or per hour rate for what the Crowns were doing in the POA court on the fines. So, so ultimately, it's an uptick in revenue to continue doing things this way. And our court is widely regarded as being quite good at these, as people, sorry, I don't mean people, as court jurisdictions take these on, as the rollout happens across the province, they're often recommended to touch base with our court staff and prosecutor or just watch our court to see how they're conducted. So I just wanted to give those positive comments to our court staff and prosecutor. And that's sort of the overall description. I suppose the last thing I'd say is, to the extent it was originally a pilot project, I would describe this as a continuation of a download. And so not to say there is no counsel discretion not to assign this extension, but I recommend it. And essentially, this is occurring across the province, so we're just really looking to move it forward.
All right. Thank you very much for that report. Does anyone have any questions or comments, concerns? Seeing none. Jenna, please.
Be it resolved that the report titled Parts Three and Nine POA interim transfer agreement extension dated December 6, 2023 from the Director of Legal Services be received and filed, and that the Council of the County of Elgin authorize the Warden and CAO clerk to execute the Parts Three and Nine Provincial Offenses Act interim transfer agreement extension.
Do we have a mover and seconder? Counselor Latham will move. Anyone? Counselor Noble will second. All in favor? And that's carried. Thank you. Six eight, Elgin, regarding Public Urbanism Agreement 2024, single source. I assume this is your. Nick, thank you.
Thank you, Warden. So this is seeking Council's authorization to essentially continue on with our existing planning consultant. So there's a, a few different scenarios for what the future of planning services at the county looks like that's coming through your budget. And then also with the onboarding of Mr. Parkin as CAO in the new year. Regardless of where that goes next year, we need to continue having external planning consultants provide us with service so we can deliver our mandated service delivery under the Planning Act as the approval authority. The staff are very satisfied with the work that Republic Urbanism has been providing to us. That's Mr. Hicks that you see up here as our acting manager of planning at Council. And the agreement that is currently in force essentially terminates on December 31st. So this recommendation is to put it in place for one more year. There's no minimum guarantee of work and no exclusivity clauses in it. So if, over time, if the internal resources of the county increase and the amount of external work decrease, there's no consequence to that in the contract. So it's just paying for the actual service that we receive as needed. And the reason it's a single source is fairly straightforward. It's to deliver a continuity of service. It would be a significant interruption to our planning services to abruptly switch providers at this point because Mr. Hicks has familiarity with all of the ongoing files, including the official planning project. And beyond that familiarity, just the interruption in file status, if we had to go and procure another entity, would lead to potential missing of statutory deadlines for when we have to bring things forward to Council. So that's the recommendation that's before you. The financial implication is the rate is just going up $10 an hour in conformance with the firm's rates moving up for 2024. That has already been accounted for in the proposed budget that's coming forward for 2024. So those are my comments, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you very much for that, Nick. Does anyone have any questions? Jenna?
Be it resolved that the report titled Elgin Re-Public Urbanism Agreement 2024 Single Source dated December 6, 2023 from the Director of Legal Services be received and filed, and that the Council of the County of Elgin authorize the Warden and CAO clerk to execute an agreement for planning services between Elgin County and 10042986 Canada Incorporated, operating as re-public urbanism for 2024.
Mover and seconder, please. Counselor Widner and Counselor Hens will second. All in favor? That's carried. That's carried. Thank you. Six point nine, extension of Metavi EMS service agreement. Nick, please.
Thank you, Warden. Uh, so this is a, a report that has several moving parts and I actually have updates since I wrote it just the other day. Uh, so the first update I can provide to council is you'll see that the recommendation is for an extension of the services for up to six months. Uh, we've landed on three months being sufficient. Um, and the reason this report is coming forward at all is we're, uh, finalizing our negotiations and updating a land ambulance service agreement with Metavi, uh, to commence in twenty twenty-four. Uh, and that will be presented to council early in the new year. We're currently, uh, targeting the January thirtieth council date for a, a complete package to come to council with the Folsom Report, the, the changes, the financial implications and the associated other agreements, uh, for the actual ambulance vehicles themselves and the base leases. Um, it, the reason it wasn't completed till now had to do with a few moving parts on, uh, the Metavi end of predicting some of the budgeting relating to staffing, which is about, now, I am summarizing here. I'm not meaning this as a true perfect answer, but roughly eighty-five to ninety percent of their cost arises out of staffing because we own the ambulance and the bases. Uh, and so that was an important factor and that's just come into focus, uh, more recently. Uh, so that's the reason that we need the extension, um, and I, uh, as your Director of Legal Services, did not want a gap in an agreement. So I did not want us to have no agreement in place from December thirty-first through whenever this is finalized. So we're just seeking an extension to finalize, uh, new agreement. And then the last thing I commented on is a new agreement would contemplate retroactive adjustments backwards to January first. So, um, for now, this will just continue the enforced amount, but any, uh, financials or, or differences in the new agreement will then just click back into place and we'll sort out the adjustment at that point. So happy to answer any questions and also if, if, uh, Mr. Shropshire, who's worked with me on this file, wish to add anything I, uh, threw you, Warden, turn anything over to him as well.
Any questions, concerns, comments? Well, I am happy to know that, uh, we are moving closer to having that agreement in the new year. Okay.
Be it resolved that the report titled Extension of Metavi EMS Services Agreement dated December sixth, twenty twenty-three from the Director of Legal Services be received and filed. And that council authorize an extension of the Elgin County Metavi EMS Elgin, Ontario Incorporated Agreement for Land Ambulance Services for a period of up to six months. With the parties agreeing that the adjustments retro, retroactive to January first, twenty twenty-four may occur subsequent to the completion of negotiations between the parties. And that council authorize the C A O clerk to execute extensions of any ambulance base lease or land ambulance vehicle lease as between Elgin and Metavi EMS Elgin, Ontario Incorporated that may be required to conform to the extension of land ambulance services.
All right, do we have a mover and seconder for that? Counselor Jiguer, and it looks like Counselor Hens will second. All in favor? Any opposed? It's carried. Thank you. Moves, moves us on to section seven, council correspondence. There are no items for consideration. Okay, we have items for information. We have a letter to the Thames Valley District School Board. And from the St. Thomas Elgin, uh, Second Stage Housing News. Yes, sorry, Counselor Cookett.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I just want to comment on the letter to, to the Thames Valley District School Board concerning police presence. Uh, the, the move by the T V D S B to, uh, pause school and police presence in the school is, is, um, and sends an, sends an incorrect, uh, at, at least a, uh, uh, a, if not incorrect, at least a misleading message and at worst a dangerous message to the public about the police services and their role in the schools. Uh, certainly looking at, uh, society's, uh, increase in, in drugs and in, increase in violence. Uh, you know, police presence in the schools, I think, is more than, uh, ever necessary. You know, we're spending a lot more money here in terms of Southwest Public Health Unit, uh, to look at, uh, the situation in, in this county concerning violence, concerning opiates. And, uh, so I'd like this council to, you know, support the, the letter to the Thames Valley District School Board in some way, whether it's a, we send our own letter or a statement that we support this letter. Um, I'm thinking that, um, well, maybe I should have worn my canine hat here because, uh, um, many years ago in my former life, uh, we did have a lot of police presence in the school and it was a, a very positive effect on the students. And we even had, um, dog searches for drugs, which was a very positive aspect, uh, in the schools as well. So if we want to deal with this situation in the, in the county, in the county in particular, we need to support and bring back the school presence, uh, bring back police presence in the school. So, uh, I don't know if make a motion to write our own letter or to, uh, support this letter, one or the other.
Okay, thank you for that. Deputy Warden, uh, Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Um, I sat with our two, uh, local trustees a couple of weeks ago. And, uh, Ms. Ruddock, uh, I believe spoke to the board about this last week. Not sure how she made out. Um, is, is a deep concern because, uh, Thames Valley is one of the, or maybe the last school board that has not put police presence back in, in, in Ontario. It's like, we're the last ones, which doesn't make any sense whatsoever. I think we definitely should, uh, as, uh, Counselor Cookett said, we need to support this, whether it's our own letter or, um, I think all of the municipalities should probably be sending a letter to the Thames Valley School Board. Uh, I'll be meeting with a couple of the senior management team from Thames Valley this, uh, Friday regarding some issues at Southall Public School and a possible holding zone. And, uh, I'll be definitely talking about this at the same time when I see those people.
Thank you for those comments, uh, Counselor Hens.
I agree with Counselor Cookett's, uh, assessment of this. My C A O, C A O and myself, we met with the new Inspector Nems a couple of weeks ago. She raised this issue. The O P P are very troubled with the stance of the school board on this one. They're there to do good work and somehow society, and this is an extension of that, have made the O P P and policing out to be the bad guy where they're not. Through movements that I don't even need to mention. So this is coming from the O P P. They want to be there. There's good work to be done. There's that bridge building and relationship making that they can provide. So I support either this letter or our own, maybe even a stronger statement to the school board that something needs to be done in this regard. Thank you.
Counselor Latham?
Oh, through you, Mr. Warden, to, I agree with Mr. Crockett, uh, your, uh, statement that you made. I'd like to know the absolute reason for not wanting the police's presence in their schools. Uh, somebody stood on top of a, a chair and shouted it out loud because they, they were only doing the good. They were doing good for, for the students. Some people, um, had, had, was bold enough to even go and have a word with a constable or whatever. It made everybody feel happy. So, uh, yes, I think we should really, uh, go back at the school board and, uh, and, and let them know our, our views.
Uh, thank you for those comments. Uh, Counselor Widner.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Warden. I totally agree with what Mr. Cookett's saying here and I maybe have a little deeper connection to some of these problems. I have relatives that are teachers in the school. And it is absolutely disgusting what's going on in the schools. Kids are carrying weapons. Teachers have no defense against the weapons. Um, some teachers are wearing protective clothing. Like where have we got to this point? How did we get to this point? But, um, and you know, both of these relatives of mine have been subject to violence. Now, I always thought the school board had to set the bar to protect their employees. They're certainly not doing it. There's workplace health and safety and we'd be, you know, under the same guidance as that, but they don't seem to be doing anything. Um, I don't know how the police ever got pulled out of the schools and for what reason. But I think it's high time that we put it back. And I've spoken to trustees about it. They seem to be receptive to putting them back. Like, I don't know who's running the school board. I thought the ratepayers that put tax money in should have some say in this. It doesn't seem like they do. But I think it's high time things turned around to put the police back in the schools, protect our teachers and protect our students. Because I don't think they're getting a good education experience right now with all this violence going on in the classrooms. Like when they have to evacuate a whole classroom while some is in there screaming, carrying on, they lose an hour of their day. And how upsetting is that, you know, psychologically to them. So I think their dreams are a big change and I hope we can support this.
Yep, thank you. Uh, sorry, uh, Deputy Warden Jones.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Warden. Just, uh, I, I know, uh, St. Thomas Police Service Board has sent a letter, similar letter as well. I'm not sure if Elmer has, but if they have, they probably should. Um, I think we all need to push hard on this one.
Yep, thank you. And you had comment, uh, Counselor Cookett.
Yes, thank you. I think the original reason for the pause in, uh, police officers in schools was that some, uh, parents and some students, uh, indicated that they were afraid when they saw a police officer in the school. And it's a small number of people and the board decided that they would take away that fear, I guess. Uh, I just wanted to, to, to also, uh, uh, support what, uh, Counselor Widner is saying about, uh, uh, the situation in the schools. Has gotten to the point where it is dangerous for teachers to teach in the schools. And, um, I, I'm, you know, police presence is going to help a little bit because we're talking here about, you know, enforcement of the laws and enforcement of the rules and enforcement of regulations dealing with, uh, with students and, uh, it's high time that, uh, police officers got back in the schools. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that. Anyone else? Okay, I think we should share and, uh, I'll take responsibility for this. It should have been actually on our agenda for information items. There was a letter, uh, jointly written on behalf of Mayor Preston and myself from the Community Safety and Wellbeing Integration Table, very much the same content as from the Police Services Board that was sent last week. Uh, and yeah, it, it should have been communicated to council, so I apologize for that. Uh, if you would like a similar letter from behalf of the county, I'm sure we could do that. Okay, so we'll just include that into the motion. Okay.
Be it resolved that correspondence items seven point two point one and seven point two point two be received and filed. And that the warden be directed to send a letter to the Chair of the Thames Valley District School Board detailing Elgin County Council's concerns regarding the pause of the school resource officer program in schools.
Okay, do we, we willing to move that to Counselor Cookett? All right, a seconder? Deputy Warden Jones. All in favor? That's carried. Thank you. Moving on to section eight, other business statements, inquiries by members. Uh, Counselor, uh, Jiguer?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Warden. Kind of a bit of a segue on the topic we were just discussing, but, um, I want to acknowledge that today marks the sad anniversary of the Montreal massacre at, um, the Coeur Polite technique. I think it's important that we use this opportunity to recognize the fact that in, and sorry. Well, I won't apologize, but I want us to recognize that in twenty twenty-three misogyny and gender-based violence, bullying and harassment are still very much an issue. Not in other countries, well, it is in other countries, but not just in other countries. Not just in other provinces, but in our own backyard and right in front of our eyes. What is further troubling to me is the fact that despite all the rules and safeguarding policies and the laws in place, acts of violence against women, even sometimes just microaggressions, which shouldn't be just, just microaggressions, continue with impunity. Without accountability. And even worse, sometimes those behaviors are indirectly rewarded. I ask that at a minimum, everyone in this room, you take the time to reflect on if and how you are leading by example. If and how you are contributing to the problem. Sometimes just by being a silent bystander. And most importantly, I hope you will reflect on how you will commit to genuinely contribute to the solutions. Violence against women in all its shapes and forms must end. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Any other statements? All right, we, uh, there is one statement I would like to put out there, uh, it's regarding committee appointments and assignments. Uh, it's been brought to my attention with the exception of the Rural Initiatives and, uh, Planning Advisory Committee, which is established for a four-year term. The others are one-year appointments. So I want to give council the opportunity to think about their committee assignments. If there are any changes that they would like. If, uh, for example, you'd like to move on or, or not serve or you're, haven't got an appetite for a particular committee assignment, you do have. Let us know over the next coming weeks so we can make those adjustments, uh, for early January. That's one. The second, uh, I guess, uh, is that this is our last meeting before the holiday season. And so, uh, on behalf of, uh, County Council, I want to, uh, offer to those who are tuning in today, wish them a very happy and safe holiday season. And we hope to have everyone back with us in the new year. Okay? All right. Any notice of motion? Matters of urgency. All right, we're moving into closed meeting items.
Be it resolved that we do now proceed into closed meeting session in accordance with the Municipal Act to discuss the following matters under Municipal Act, section two thirty-nine, two. Closed meeting item number one, closed meeting minutes, November twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three, regular meeting of council and special meeting of council. And closed meeting item number two, advice regarding potential litigation, section two thirty-nine, two B and E.
Do we have a mover and seconder for that? Counselor Widner? Counselor Noble? All in favor? That's carried. All right, welcome back. Motion to rise and report.
Be it resolved that we do now rise and report.
I need a mover and seconder, please. Uh, Deputy Warden Jones, uh, Counselor Hens. All in favor? Okay, closed meeting item number one.
Be it resolved that the closed meeting minutes of the regular meeting of council and the special meeting of council held on November twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three be adopted.
Mover and seconder, please. Counselor Jiguer and, uh, Counselor Noble will second. All in favor? That's carried. Closed meeting item number two.
Be it resolved that the report titled Advice Regarding Potential Litigation dated December sixth, twenty twenty-three from the Director of Legal Services be received for information and that the Director of Legal Services proceed as directed.
Mover and seconder, please. Counselor Sloan? Counselor Latham will second. All in favor? Carried. Section eleven, motion to adopt recommendations from the Committee of the Whole.
Be it resolved that we do now adopt recommendations of the Committee of the Whole.
Mover and seconder, please. Deputy Warden Jones and I think Counselor Noble. All in favor? That's carried. Uh, consideration of the bylaws.
Be it a first, second and third read of bylaw number twenty-three dash forty-seven, being a bylaw to appoint Blaine Parkin as Chief Administrative Officer Clerk and to repeal bylaw number twenty-three dash twenty-five.
Mover and seconder. Counselor Widner? Counselor Cookett? All in favor? Any opposed? It's carried. One right over there? Yeah, there you go. Yeah. One right over there? Yeah, there you go. Yeah. Okay, uh, the confirmation bylaw.
Be it a first, second, and third read of Bylaw Number twenty-three dash forty-eight, being a bylaw to confirm proceedings of the Municipal Council of the Corporation of the County of Elgin at the December fifth and sixth, twenty twenty-three meetings.
Do we have a mover and seconder for that? Counselor Sloan, Counselor Latham will second. All in favor? That is carried, which brings us to the adjournment motion.
Be it resolved that we do now adjourn at eleven oh one A M. to meet again on January ninth, twenty twenty-four at nine o'clock A M.
Mover and seconder, Counselor Widner? And Counselor Hens? Okay, all in favor? That is carried. Thank you very much again to everyone. Uh, safe and enjoyable holiday season, and, uh, we certainly look forward to staying in touch, and, uh, we'll see you in the new year.